Twenty-four Culver Town Council meeting to order, please. Roll call.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Phil Githens.
Here.
Jeanne Monroe.
Here.
Dana Neer.
Here.
And Sally Rogers, absent.
Okay. Before we stand for the pledge, I'd like to remind people this meeting is being recorded. Your participation will be your consent to appear on the town's YouTube channel. At that time, if you have a cell phone or other electronic device, please place it on mute or turn it off. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of amendments for the January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Monroe makes a motion. Mr. Neer, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're just getting through a little bit. Next thing, and then we'll go skip one here on Dan Adams until we have him here.
He's over at the Grace Church Board Meeting right now.
Yes.
Yeah, we needed to coordinate, so we'll get with him on the next meet.
Okay. Miller's Manor Request.
That's me.
Oh, okay. And you are, sir?
I'm Jason Hill. Now the administrator at Miller's Manor Manor here in Culver.
All right.
I can.
You're on.
Okay. I received an invoice, and I've read, I've read the requirements, the ordinance, and I know that we did have at Miller's Manor Manor. But we have, I have charges in five thousand dollars over a two-month, three-month period. And we really did have some issues with our, with our alarm system, with our sprinkler system. I have invoices starting from November through December where we put sixty-five hundred dollars into our system to fix the issues that we did have. So I feel like moving forward, we have a good plan in place. And I need some wood to knock on, but I don't believe we've had any false alarms here recently. The other issue that we do have from time to time, and two of those dates are that, is we do serve a population where we have residents with dementia. And so from time to time, they will pull the fire alarm. So I have upwards of five hundred dollar charges. It's just a lot of money for us to be able to afford. Again, we have a, we have a population that sometimes they, we can't provide one-on-one care to people. And sometimes they do things that we wish they wouldn't do, but we feel like we provide a really good service to the community for those that need that type of service. I realize that no one wants to be, I woke up in the morning when the fire alarm, I get those calls as well. I understand the fire department's frustration with that. But I am here to ask to see if there's anything we could do about the bill to reduce that in any way possible because of the money we put into our fire system to make sure that it performs moving forward. So I'm asking for a reduction in the invoice, if I could.
What's, how much is the invoice?
Five thousand dollars.
Jason, was this a technical issue, or do you know that you had dementia patients?
It was a technical issue for, I've got one, two, three, I've got twelve on here, and out of the twelve, let's see here, eleven, six, seven, eight, eleven, nine, eleven, ten, and then the ones, twelve, one. And that's right around the time when we had the main water break as well. And so that caused one of our check valves to go to alarm, which in a way it was a good thing because we knew we needed to replace it, so that was part of the charges. But out of those twelve, we have two that we've had residents pull the fire alarm. So the other six to eight were, were the function of the fire panel.
Because I, I feel like we did this two years ago, maybe?
May of, May of twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I remember when I was sitting in that chair that we, I believe, did a total forgiveness of a bill.
It went from twenty-one hundred, you asked for a forgiveness of twenty-one, from twenty-one hundred to a thousand on that one.
Okay, I wondered, I feel like I remember there was a technical issue then, hadn't been fixed yet.
Which we replaced the fire panel at that point. So then the fire panel that we replaced it with is a smart panel, and some of the things aren't so smart in our building, in the smaller building, and so there were a lot of bugs in it.
Counsel.
Having a major dementia patient, I can totally understand that, and I feel like we should have some empathy about that. The technical issues, maybe not as much, just because it's been an issue so long, I think even before twenty-twenty-two it was. And I don't think we were always enforcing it up to that point, then it kind of became a problem in twenty-twenty-two again. But I don't know, it's, oh, that's okay.
Yeah, and we do have a, we have a monitoring company that we work with, and we try to give the fire department a heads up if it's a false alarm. And I'm slightly uncomfortable with that because I'm not the professional.
Yeah.
My worry is that at some point.
It could be real.
It could be real, and, and that would be a problem.
Yeah, especially with you having to maybe mobilize people that are mobiles.
Dana, what's your thoughts?
This is the third time, man?
I, I just know it's been in it, historically, it's been an issue.
I was backing down an invoice from twenty-sixteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, that was from three calls or something, it just.
Okay, so it was just the twenty-twenty-two.
The new system's been installed since when?
We installed the, the new system, it was last year that we installed the new system because we actually, Life Safety Code comes in, and so they check all of our instruments out. So it was probably exactly a year ago that we installed the panel. Because it wouldn't keep time correctly, the alarms would sound, but it wouldn't keep time correctly. And so the panel was old enough, it was the original panel, that we had to replace the actual whole fire panel with a new panel so that the time would read appropriately.
The upgrade, though, you said there hasn't been an alarm for the last six weeks?
Yeah.
Do you have any recourse with the software company at all? Like, do they have any guarantees for you? When they make these fixes, it seems unfair that you guys are taking the burden of a fee when it's really the software, right?
Well.
Something wrong with the equipment or whatever.
It looked like that, we, we switched vendors, and it looked like the vendor we had before hooked some things up wrong on the fire panel, which caused some of the issues as well. So we brought somebody else, new, in to take a look at it, and it's been resolved since.
But do you appreciate the effort to get it fixed?
Yeah, and, yeah, we, there was several other backflow switches that were bad that we had to replace as well down in the hallways that we weren't aware of. So we've tried to do everything we could to, to stop it moving forward. I'm not saying that it'll never happen again.
It's been six weeks, though. Pretty good track record.
Hey, we'll, we'll take a win when we can take a win, right?
Bill, what do you think? I'll make a recommendation that we just cut the bill in half.
Have we had feedback, Terry, on this at all?
Yeah, and speaking with Terry, there's a couple of things. You know, working, trying to work with you, right?
Yeah.
And giving you the notices, just out of, Terry had a few questions, I think, you know, after the false alarms, how, what's the regular maintenance on this? Is it, is it a regular maintenance issue? Because you keep, you mentioned that you keep finding a couple of things with each false alarm, right? Could those be prevented by regular maintenance?
Oh, we do, we, we have a company that comes in every month, and they're just not finding them, or is that? Things trigger it, and it, and they basically, and then we fix it, they say, hey, you've got something, an issue with your wiring, or this is, this is wired wrong. Or we, we go up into, up into the drop ceiling, and maybe where the connections on the wires from the previous vendor aren't as good as what they should have been, I would think.
A couple of things that Terry kind of expressed is that, for consistency's sake, because we've had issues with the schools as well. Right, and we have to be careful on how much we can compensate. But he also mentioned that he definitely wouldn't want to categorize the, the malfunctions with, with the dementia patients. So you said that ten out of twelve weren't, were technical issues, right?
Right.
So maybe somewhere along the lines of that kind of split with compensation-wise, maybe not necessarily half. I don't know, Terry, Terry might want to see that number a little bit higher because of the technical issue not being as great as the other, but he definitely, I don't think, would be opposed to working with you on it. That's where he kind of left me. So.
So would you be comfortable with three thousand instead of five?
Sure.
You wanted to amend your motion, I would second it.
So you want the bill to be three rather than five?
Rather than twenty-five hundred.
Yes, split it, split it in half, sure, I'll amend the motion to it'll be reduced to three thousand from five thousand.
I'll second that.
Mr. Githens moves that the bill be reduced to three thousand. Ms. Monroe seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
You're led fair, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd be for, I hope this will be the end of it.
I hope so, too. So, Terry.
It's much easier to get. At least you've addressed it, and I think that's important.
Yeah, I feel like.
Congratulations on that, I mean, seriously. You were proactive about that, so.
Thank you.
Attorney's contract.
Yeah, Mr. Clevenger, I was going to suggest that we approve a contract with Clevenger, Wyland, and Cerisi with the terms of that agreement being to maintain the retainer fee that they suggested retaining, but increase the hourly rate to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour for anything that would occur outside of that the meetings and such, so when they're working on cases.
I'll second that. Move by Ms. Monroe to move the hourly rate to two-hundred-and-fifty and the retainer rate to twelve-hundred.
A quarter.
Or twelve, was, I'm sorry, twelve?
Twelve hundred, a quarter.
Four-eight-hundred a year for the retainer. Twelve hundred a quarter.
Right.
Right, okay, right. All those in favor, or any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay. Plan Commission appointment. I have an appointment, and I'm going to appoint Joel Sammison to the Plan Commission.
I believe that we also have an employee appointment. Jerry Seiler has agreed to replace Wayne, who was our previous employee appointment. I'm going to make the motion to approve Jerry Seiler and also thank Wayne for, like, many years of service. I think he's been doing it all the years I've been on council.
I'll second it. Ms. Monroe moves to appoint Jerry Seiler and to express our appreciation to Wayne Bean for his years of service. Mr. Githens, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Disappointments. Dunes update.
Did you approve the contract?
Pardon?
I mean, I realize on the attorney contract that you approved the
The rates?
The rates, but you did not actually approve the contract. You might want to make a motion to approve that contract.
Thanks, I'll make the motion to approve the contract with the terms that we agreed on in the previous motion.
I'll second. Ms. Monroe moves to approve the contract with the law firm of Clevenger, Cerisi, and Wyland, Manhuffrey. Mr. Githens, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Contract approved. But we have one more contract, and that's the contract that Jeanette provided to do the
zoning ordinance? Yeah, you can go ahead and approve that.
Pardon?
You may go ahead and approve that. I will take the money out of the contractual services.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve that Cerisi's contract to do the work on the zoning ordinance, amendments, modifications, et cetera.
Ms. Monroe moves that we approve the contract with Jeanette Cerisi. Is there a second? Mr. Neer, like, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and pose same sign. Thank you. You're on.
Good evening. Dunes update for everybody. You're unexpectedly contacted this week by Culver Equities, requesting a postponement of the bond, the signing, which was actually scheduled for Tuesday, two-six. The developer in the conversation assured us that their commitment was still strong. Just stated they wanted to make sure they submitted and cleared the TRC as well as the Planning Commission prior to closing the bonds. We had a couple of conversations subsequent to that, and the Dunes Committee is going to schedule a meeting for next Thursday with Culver Equities, specifically with Ferk Richardson, their legal counsel, and Alan Collins. And we're going to discuss the recent move with the closing date and where we're moving forward. So that is what I have for an update on the Dunes right now.
No anticipated date?
At the moment, no, and I don't want to offer that until I have the conversations.
Sorry, Bill, thank you.
To be honest with you, Bill, any anticipated date provided by Culver Equities has to be tentative because it would assume that somehow we already pre-designed how fast things are going to move through the TRC and Planning Commission.
Okay, so.
So it's really not a date that we can determine until we have submittals, and they go through due process.
Makes sense to me, I just.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anything more, Kevin, on Dunes?
That's where we're at right now.
All right. About Tom Manager Report.
Good stuff. I want to request the council's approval for a maintenance contract and inspection for our four Onon generators. One at the wastewater, one at the water plant, and two on the lift stations. The total for that is going to be three-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven ninety-one. Submitted for your approval.
I'll make the motion, we approve the maintenance contract for three-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven and ninety-one cents.
Okay. Ms. Monroe moves to accept the contract of three thousand, what did we say it was?
One-sixty-seven ninety-one.
Three thousand, three fifty-seven ninety-one.
One-sixty-seven.
And Mr. Githens makes a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, okay.
Thank you for approval, appreciate it. Updates on the IU Tree Grant, we have a fellow that's going to be staying with us over the summer, hopefully be here in May. Her name is Abby Garcia, and she's from Goshen, Indiana. She's described as enthusiastic first-year master of science economic, or environmental sciences from IU Bloomington. She pursued several hands-on and public engagement experience, including farming, interning as a botany with a botany project, and serving on Alaska's first all-female fire team, which is, that's pretty cool. I think she's going to be, from what I can tell, pretty dynamic, and I can't wait for her to join us. She's going to arrive in May, she's going to be charged with the responsibility of kind of doing an assessment, working with our tree commission. She's going to independently locate areas that she feels are strategic for tree planting, as well as species. She's going to coordinate those spots with our tree commission to make sure there's not utility issues or building issues going down the line. They want to ensure that they're going to be planted in healthy, stable environments that they can grow in. And I can't wait to see what she can do. I'm really excited by that. So I didn't have opportunity to give her a phone call, I thought that might be too forward, after two days. But I'm going to call her this weekend and have a nice conversation, see if we can't help her anticipate any needs she might have to make her experience successful. I also want to extend a special thanks to Andrea and Amber for their hard work and sometimes frustration, I'm sure, supporting us and supporting tourism in Culver. They've been working with the supporting departments, everybody gets involved in one form or another for Winterfest. And I just really appreciate them taking the lead on that, and the way our other departments help coordinate that from permitting to setting up. So much appreciated from Town Hall. Currently reading through comprehensive plan, and it's quite a page-turner. Just trying to see where we overlap in terms of interest, where the scalability is, and how to project that over a timeframe, and, and kind of bring that to the council and, and have some more conversations about it. It's, it's a learning process for me, but I've appreciated that reading. Also attended a housing seminar, United Way up in Marshall County, kind of presented some information. Today, Breaman was there, Argus had a time to touch base with them a bit, some different entities in the county, and enjoyed the conversation. One thing I walked away with, just, it's interesting to hear about housing, but there's a, housing to an end, right? How do you strategically use housing to better enhance your community or build town? And housing in itself is a, is a means to an end, I think. It can't be the end of just putting up houses, so that resonated with me, and I appreciated the time with them, looking forward to future meetings. They, they plan on having a couple more of those seminars and like to spend some time with them. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Department head report. EMS, Wes, anything?
Business usual.
Business usual.
Would like to add, though, Wes, I really appreciate our conversation, you and Mike both, yesterday, that was a good time, appreciate you guys.
Terry, are you on for fire?
Yes.
Okay. Police?
Wayne had nothing, he.
Wayne had nothing.
He just wanted to say nothing.
Amber?
She's not, not online.
Bob, are you on for utilities?
Yes, yes.
I am, I have nothing.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Clerk's report.
I have several invoices for approval that are over twenty-five hundred dollars. Image trend for three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents, that's for EMS, that's a contractual service for one of their monitors. BMO Harris, four-thousand-twenty-five twenty-two, that's a compilation of a number of different, that's a credit card, basically. There were a number of charges on it, so not one thing was over thirty-five hundred dollars. Seller Services, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and thirty-four cents, and that was the, I believe that was the snow removal contract that we have with them. Come-in sales and service, six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, that was a sewer, I believe that is for generator. And then Ops Gear, two invoices each for five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Those were to outfit the two new squat cars. And finally, Miller's Insurance for twenty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and that is for the workman's comp policy.
Was it five thousand or fifteen thousand each?
On the cop cars.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand, eighteen.
Okay, you said five.
I'm sorry.
Just wanted to make sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the claims.
Second. Move by Ms. Monroe to approve claims over twenty-one hundred dollars, seconded by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
The only other few things I have, I've got two conflict of interest forms. One is for Amber Cowell, as you know, she's our Perk Superintendent, but also serves as the Director for the Lake Culver and Lake Maxon Cookie Business Center. And then Terry Wakefield, whose wife owns Suzie Q Embroidery, and on occasion, the town does business with I can have a motion to approve or accept both of those.
Okay.
Motion to accept the conflict of interest.
Ms. Monroe moves to accept the conflict of interest. Mr. Githens, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Attorney's report.
Appreciate your approval of the contract. Been talking with Jeanette, I know that she plans by, sometime by the end of the month to, now that that contract for the zoning ordinance is approved, to start working that into her schedule and get started on the work. I know it's going to be a several-month process, it'll have, you know, some community input sessions and interaction with the Plan Commission and you, but she's going to get started with that soon. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the room for utility shut-off or ordinance violation? Saying not anyone online. No one online. Citizen input. Anyone in the room for citizen input? John says no.
What night, John?
Anyone online for citizen input? Hearing none. Dana, council issues?
I have none.
Jimmy?
I have one quick one, just to let you know, I completely kind of spaced it till we were sitting here at the earlier executive. I will be filling out a conflict of interest that you can approve at the next meeting. I am employed by VS Engineering, which has done business in the past with Porter and Transportation. I also do work for Lakeside Consulting, and Lakeside Consulting has a contract with East Shore Conservancy District and Southwest Conservancy District. I chair the Crossroads One Marshall County Committee. That will probably change, but I need to put that down now. I'm also, do work for the Culver Youth Club on their auction event. And so I, we have not given money to that club in recent year or two, but we haven't passed. So my intention is to put all of those down. I think it was Culver Boys and Girls Club last time we gave a donation to them.
Though we did give some money last year for Culver.
Or was it a budget that they've never sent an invoice for, or asked you?
Oh, really?
Dana will be putting out one of this. I just wanted you guys to know that I finally remembered I need to do that, and those are the four I can think of that I need to put down. And if you think of another one, let me know.
All right, thank you, Jenny.
Uh huh.
I have nothing, Bill. Next Thursday, February fifteenth, at six P M. At the request of the Breaman, Bourbon, and Argus Town Managers, their Town Councils, and Town Attorneys, there will be a discussion in One Marshall County. Meeting that takes place.
What time is that?
Six o'clock Thursday.
Are they planning on telling me? As the Chair of the board?
Well. Don't shoot the messenger, don't shoot the messenger. The meeting will take place in the County, Marshall County Building on Jefferson Street, on the second floor meeting room.
That's on Thursday, Bill?
Thursday, the fifteenth, at six P M.
Isn't there a ready meeting that night?
There what?
I thought M C E D C had a re, a meeting on ready that night.
Like I said, don't, don't, don't shoot the messenger.
No, but I thought elected officials were being invited to it, too, so.
And there may be something out, yeah, the fifteenth, at six P M.
Pretty sure it was a Thursday, I thought Greg sent a message out to.
Well, maybe he's going to be there, too.
No, but it wasn't at that location, I know.
Oh, calendar, that doesn't mean it's not there.
Okay.
What's your meeting, Bob, Bill?
Are we supposed to get some sort of official invite to this, or is it just through random announcements?
Like I said, don't shoot the messenger. I was, I was.
How do you know about it?
Because I was asked to present it.
And the Chair of the group being discussed wasn't asked.
I was just.
Well.
Well, this is at the request of Bourbon, Freeman, and Argus, requested to have this meeting, so that's all I can tell you. To talk about One Marshall County.
Okay.
So that's, that's how it came about, from what I've been told.
So who's organizing this meeting? Those three communities?
Those three communities, from what I understand.
So why is it at the county building?
Because they want anybody to.
Is this a public meeting?
It is a public meeting.
Is it being? Is it being facilitated by county government or by those governments?
Combination of both, I don't know. I mean, you, you got all the questions.
Communicated it to you. Those three government agencies communicated this?
Jesse called me.
Is there an agenda?
Yeah.
There will be one.
Why don't I have it at the top?
I'm sure there will be one.
Out of order.
Just so I can.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Like I said, don't shoot the messenger.
No attention, dude.
What is One Marshall County?
It's what Linda Yoder presented on a couple of meetings ago. It's Marshall County Crossroads that did Regional Stellar.
Okay.
Has for the last year been studying through an in-focus, uh, facilitator. Um, bringing organizations together and, um, the goal was to make these organizations more efficient in doing regional planning work. So Linda came and presented to the Culver Town Council, I think also the Redevelopment Commission. Um, and, and you guys, I think last year voted to support One Marshall County uh, because the request is to fund this new organization and other entities would sit at the table with One Marshall County, them retaining their own boards. But this being kind of like a service-oriented organization providing grant service, doing things like Stellar, Ready, whatever regional initiatives are taking place and also aiding communities the way that we did with Stellar.
Jenny and some others, uh, last year, um, when I was Plymouth City Attorney, made a similar presentation to Plymouth City Council, was well received and and, uh, when I was Plymouth City Attorney, by virtue of that role, I served on the Board of Marshall County Crossroads, which is the organization that is now changing into, uh, One Marshall County.
So we presented Plymouth, Culver, Bremen, Bourbon. Uh, we were trying to present to Argus in the fall and well into December. And then, um, Bourbon, we did in December with, I believe their new councilman. One of the previous councilmen's, uh, well, Ward wasn't at it, but the new guy was. I can't remember his name off the top of my head. Um, and I think we presented twice in Bremen, um, through Linda Yoder and Mari Usterbon. Uh, who are both on that team. So, uh, apparently three of the communities want to have another meeting via just, it sounds like.
Anything else, Bill?
Nope.
And, you know, you learned of it before the organization did.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, to move. Move by Ms. Guthan, second by Ms. Monroe, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.